Good evening and welcome to our Tuesday, December 12th, meeting of the Select Board. It is a little after 5:30 PM. We had to make a couple of adjustments and move out into the big room to occupy everyone in attendance. First up, we have a new appointment for the Town of Buckland. I would like to introduce Jake Wall. He is our new Highway Department Buildings and Grounds employee.
Do you live in Buckland?
I live in Charlotte. I've lived in the village.
Bring me out. We have five daughters.
I'm trying to get it.
Jacob will be out plowing sidewalks and general facilities maintenance. See him out and about. Please, you know, give him the old encouraging attaboy. The thankless job. He's got good first-hand knowledge.
That's not true. We waiting for him.
Good. I bet he do. But I'm just saying to those who may not. I know you do. Well, one thing.
So, yeah, welcome aboard Jake. A couple of days into it.
Yeah.
Heather hasn't run you off yet, so.
Not yet.
You know, we're out of the gate in good shape, so. Welcome to, as Heather would say, hashtag Team Buckland.
Thank you.
Welcome. And your little baby, too.
Moving on to our agenda. We do have the police station listening session. Before we get into that, I am going to go over the Town of Buckland's public notice on the winter parking ban. Buckland's winter parking ban is in effect starting December 1st through March 31st. There's no overnight parking on any town street, roadway, or sidewalk. Parking will be allowed between the hours of, or no parking will be allowed between the hours of 12:00 midnight and 6:00 AM. Either the Police or Highway Department may, for any purpose of removing or plowing snow or ice, remove any vehicle that interferes with such work. The only exception will be emergency vehicles and the performance of emergency work. The removal of any vehicle and the total cost of such removal, including storage, garaging, will be the responsibility of the registered owner of said vehicle. Overnight municipal parking is available in designated town lots. The long lot located just off of the street past the Eagles parking lot. The Eagles parking lot adjacent to the fraternal order of the Eagles building in unmarked spots. The town hall lot behind the town hall off of Williams Street. And Salmon Falls lot behind the Salmon Falls building on Ashford Street. Please note there will be no parking allowed in these lots from 8:00 AM through 12:00 noon after precipitation has fallen and the streets have been cleared. When plowing and/or sanding is necessary to clean the lot, any vehicle left in these parking areas after 8:00 AM will be subject to fine detoning. You will be able to find this parking ban notice on our website, Heather?
Yes.
Okay.
And on the windshields of the vehicles that are parking in the street at this time.
Okay. So, that is normal. It sounds like they're just issuing warnings at this point. Obviously, until we eventually probably get snow. I'm sure it'll be in the very, very near future. All right. We'll move on to the police station listening session. So, at our special town meeting, the town voted to authorize the Select Board to move forward in working on proposals and/or negotiations for the Police Department building. We did say that we would have listening sessions to see, gather thoughts and perspectives from town residents for what they would like to see done with the building. Whether it's in the town's best interest to look at selling the building or if there is a possible use for the town. At this time, I can open up the floor to any questions, comments?
John Moore, North Street. I've paid some attention to this building for a while. Many has under the planning board, but what I would like to say, this is the first time I've two minds, and I like to preserve the building. It's kind of my trade, although that's not really the vintage of the building that I prefer, other than the windows.
Okay.
It is built like a brick house, and seeing if there were a use for it, best not to tear it down. And in that being, I recall with some, that proposal was made by the meeting that it could be used for planning. Now, that could be kind of used would be obviously saving the building. The other building had to go for whatever reason. I just want to remind members of the public that the town, I guess a couple of years ago, the planning board used that very property as a model for the proposals for housing availability in town. Basically, that imagining that the police building wasn't there, that could be used, that could be used either as a cluster or cottage housing, a number of smaller buildings gathered around a central courtyard, which could address elder housing, first-time home buyers, disabilities, you know, affordable housing. All of those things could be mixed-use housing. So, that's the alternative if it were, if the building were to come down. But in either case, I think my bottom line thought is that I would hope that the Select Board would make a choice that would have a lasting public impact. I understand that budgets are always tight and that it might be very tempting to defray the cost of a sand and salt budget, but that would be a temporary bump in income and then it would be gone. What I would hope not to see is a private sale that would result in unaffordable housing, such as private condos and so on, that would make it, would contribute to the problem that the planning board is trying to address in trying to make housing available to people who live in town and not expensive housing for people who only sometimes might live in town. Those are my thoughts. Thanks.
Okay. Sue Roberts, 40 Berry Road. I probably have lived in town longer than any of the best of you, so I'm going to give you a history about what happened in 1950. We had three doctors in Sheldon Falls, one in Buckland, one in Colrain, one in Asheville, one in Conway. And over the 10 years between the 50s and the 60s, we came down to two. Then a group of really concerned citizens got together, funded, buying the house in East Chalston Park, recruited the three doctors, and we were back up. We opened Mohawk Valley Medical Center in the early 70s. Here we are 50 years later, we're back down to two. I would really like to see you get the community health center in here and increase our numbers. So, I have a couple of questions. My first question is, can, okay, so you need to stop. I have a couple of questions, and my first question is, can people on Zoom hear us when we're talking in the audience here?
I would assume so because Mike said that he was able to hear me before we started the meeting.
Okay, that's different, though, than us, so I just wanted to be clear about that.
I can't believe you always hear clearly. I can't. Thank you.
Could you come across to the microphone?
And can you just tell it, are we talking about the old town garage right now?
No, and actually, that was one of my questions. So, my name is Cheryl Dukes, Seer Street. My second question is, is this whole meeting the listening session? And my third question is, what is the status of the highway, the old highway garage in relation to the police station? Because there was a whole plan around what we might like to do with the old highway garage. So, that's a property that the town owns, and now we're talking about the police station. And so, it would be good to know what all the properties are that are up in play at this moment. Thank you.
So, tonight is not about the old highway garage. We are not moving anywhere with that property at this time for, well, the first main reason that we're not doing anything with that is because that is still housing our salt shed. So, until that salt shed can be moved, nothing can be done with that property because we need the salt shed. So, that is, you know, that property has pretty much been backburnered until that is completed, before we can even think about doing anything with that parcel. So, that will, that will remain in the town's possession.
Okay.
Nothing, that would be, you know, the only thing that we voted on at the special town meeting was just the police building. So, there was nothing discussed as far as the old highway garage. So, that, that's a whole separate thing.
Okay.
Okay? What was?
Is this, is this Select Board meeting, the whole meeting, the listening session, or is there a time, is there a timeframe on this part of the meeting?
I mean, it's, you know, we're obviously not running this listening session for three or four hours. We do still have other items that we've got to get through, but, you know, if we feel as though, you know, this is, I don't feel as though this is going to be our only, the only night we're doing this.
Okay. So, do you have a time set, like 45 minutes, half an hour?
We don't really have a timestamp for this, so, you know, obviously, if it's, if it starts becoming, you know, to where it's getting more and more involved, then, you know, I think we will just table it at that point and we'll bring it up to another meeting and decide at that point. I mean, you know, obviously, there's, there's a lot of folks here tonight, and it may be something to where we may have to set a meeting to just have the discussion on this property and have a more in-depth listening session. So, I think, I speak for the board when I say we weren't sure what we were going to get for public opinion on it. So, I mean, you know, if there's going to be a lot of opinion to go around, then, you know, we can, you know, we don't have any issue setting up a special night to have another, another session on this. You know, it's, I don't feel as though it's, it shouldn't be just a one-and-done thing. You know, I think with the three of us, we want what's, what we feel as though is going to be best for the town. So, you know, and for us to know what's best for the town is to hear from the town.
Do you have a process that you have set in mind at this point, or is this, in terms of listening session and whatever ones it be?
I think the only process that we're looking at right now is that, I think the only thing that we're really in agreement on is that the town should not be landlords. Ultimately, that's, that's the only decision I think that we've kind of all come to an agreement on. So, as far as, you know, leasing the building, I don't think that is a, I don't think that would be a wise decision for the town because municipalities don't tend to make the best landlords. So, you know, but, you know, hearing.
Could you repeat that? What was the one thing you decided? I couldn't quite get it.
I said the one thing that I feel as though the board's in agreement on is that the town should not be leasing this property, mainly for the fact that, you know, the municipality is not designed to be a landlord.
Right, okay.
So, you know, so, I mean, with that said, you know, it's, it's really seeing on, I mean, there's different stipulations that the town can put when we are, if we're looking to put the property out to bid. You know, there's certain stipulations that we can put into the contract. So, we do have, we do have say on, you know, different things that we could look at having on there.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mike?
Okay, thank you. I want to weigh in. I've got to get to another meeting, so if it's okay, I'd like to weigh in at this point. Thank you for having this, conducting this session, and, you know, we're all commonly using terminology like transparency, and it's, it's a pleasure to know that this process is right out there for us all to participate in or at least observe, so thank you for that. I also want to thank Sue Roberts for being the patron of the clan here this evening, and I think that my experience is that when Sue speaks, we should listen, and I have, and I would endorse the idea that the medical center ought to be given priority. I'm not sure that you can do that at this juncture, but what I would say is that I think that of the two possibilities, the two possible major directions, one being just rented to the highest bidder, or the other would put out for an RFP, I would promote that we do that, go put out for an RFP and see what people would do. And, you know, we, you know, the cultural, social heritage of the village and what that building might offer can be way more than having somebody who wants to do a mail-order business. I don't mind a mail-order business, but I think it has more possible benefits. Even just keeping people in town who then go to the medical or the dental appointment, and now they've gone off to the pharmacy to get their prescription, stop at a Keystone Market, pick up dinner, maybe get a haircut, a cup of coffee, and a Mocha Minus and so on, you can see what happens with the Mocha Minus effect when people can't stay in the village or in the town. So, I would support that, again, we put out for an RFP, see what the proposals are that come before you. However you decide that, that remains to be seen, but I would advocate for, strongly advocate, that we give serious consideration to a medical center. Thank you.
Thank you. Bruce Losso, 14 Upper Street. Bruce, you might have to come up to the microphone just so everybody else can hear.
Bruce Losso, 14 Upper Street. I'm just going to echo what Mike said and what Sue said and what John said. I think a healthcare center is the, is the best use for this property, and the property's about the right size, apparently, according to what the health, what the county has been looking at, and we really need to have primary care options in this town. And, you know, Rich Warner is great, but Rich Warner needs to retire.
In the best way possible, Rich.
So, I think that that's, this is, that's, that's, to me, the highest use of this building, and I hope that they'll give that consideration.
Thank you. Paul?
Paul, Consular Cemetery Road. My understanding is that you have two options now that we've given you the power over the building, and one is to either ask, get the highest bidder, sell it for money, get the highest bidder, and the other is what Mike is suggesting, that it's a request for proposals, meaning that you put out, we're looking for ideas. So, I would say we, you know, my opinion is that we eliminate the, we're just looking for money. I think that you want proposals. It's, we only have a couple of properties in Buckland as municipal properties available. It seems like this is a golden opportunity, and I'm on the finance committee, as much as I know, we could certainly love the highest amount of money we could get. It's a short-term thinking. I think for a long-term thinking, we should get a request for proposals, whether it's a healthcare center or something else. I, you know, love the idea of a healthcare center. I'm not sure that's the perfect thing for this space, but it may be the only, it may be what you get as a request for proposal, so I would advocate that you ask for that.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Yes?
Janice Johnson, 15 Berry Road. I love the idea of the health clinic for this town, and I just want to force that. You know, I'm in agreement with all the things that I've been said, and I love the idea that Mike said, that of keeping people in town. That hadn't really occurred to me, and I love that. I was thinking of my own convenience and how much I love being able to just sit down and see Richard right down the road, and this would be wonderfully convenient, and I think really an asset to people as they age also.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody else?
I'm Kim, 15 Berry Road. I am agreeing to a piece of this building for community purpose, either to a health center or some other community service that we might need if we sell a building and we have a need. We have to build a building. And I would honestly accept a big way to sell a perfectly built building, and we have to provide a health center for some of the services we need.
Yeah, so, just to be clear, you know, the Community Health Center would still be, the building would still be sold to them. It would not be something that, you know, so it would be, we could look at putting into the RFP that it's used for health and human services, or, you know, we can kind of stipulate in an RFP of that, of that angle.
Oh, exactly.
Yeah, the building would not, the building would still not be owned if, you know, say, you know, we, say the building were to turn into a Community Health Center, okay? That's obviously where a lot of people here are stealing. The building would be sold, the building would be sold for that purpose at that point. It's hard for a town to be. Right. Again, I mean, that would, it would, it would keep the, that would kind of bring that whole thing back to where the town would ultimately end up being a landlord, again, at that point. And I just, I feel as though that would be, I don't really want to say bad business, but, you know, it's not really, it's not municipal business to be a landlord for something like that. But there are organizations out there to where if we set an RFP for, say, you know, you know, this is kind of what the town is looking for, or this is what the town wants to sell this building for, you know, we can certainly set stipulations for that to where then a Community Health Center or another, you know, say, a private doctor's office wants to put a building in there, or, you know, a dental office or whatever. If they fall inside of the guidelines that are, that are set forth, you know, they would be able to bid on that building for it.
You don't have to, like, you don't have to put stipulation, you just put out a custom code.
Yep, 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 yep.
So, after the, after the Select Board has this meeting, the intention is that they would then meet with town council and discuss with council, this is what we've heard from the community, what are the, what are the recommendations, how do we put this into a advertised bid, what are the criteria, what are the stipulations? So, that's kind of getting ahead of what this meeting, I think, we want, they want to continue to hear what your suggestions are, what your ideas are for the building, and then they'll go back to council and have council make some recommendations as to what that advertising process looks like, and then they potentially bring that back to an open meeting.
I guess what I'm saying is, I think that this meeting is probably not enough to then go.
No, I don't think we were planning this meeting.
I have asked people for.
Just, I think that councils would simply be advising what the, if you're looking, from what you're hearing, right, the majority of you are saying you want it to be more content-based and not so much about the dollar. Okay, so council, what does that format look like? What does that document look like? And then they could, you know, continue this conversation, but I don't want to get too hung up on what the bid process looks like, because I think they need to hear more about the desired outcomes that would then lead them to that document process.
I'd like to ask a question of the group here. Okay, if there is a health center and it's charitable organization, they would not pay property taxes. Does that have any weight on your minds about that kind of a use for the building? Okay, thank you.
This is our speculation anyway. So. Cheryl Dukes, Seer Street. So, what it sounds like is that since the Town of Buckland Select Board does not want to be a landlord, what we're really talking about is selling the property. And whatever you do for an RFP requires people to actually respond to your RFP. So, if no one responds to your RFP, then we're back to where we started, which is with a police station that we need to figure out what we're going to do with. The whole thing about a health center or anything else really depends on who buys the building and how they're going to develop the property. So, if what we're really talking about is selling the building, can we just talk about selling the building?
Yeah, I mean, it, ultimately, I mean, you know, nobody is coming to the board and saying, you know, we would like to see a town wood bank put there. I'm using that as an example, Heather. We're not putting a town wood bank there.
Got it.
You know, that's what I think our first session was, was to see if anybody was bringing forward anything to where we thought that the town should be looking at keeping this building.
How to use the building?
For any other type of town use.
Okay.
Okay? So, what we're kind of gathering here tonight is that that is not really the way that townspeople want to steer with it.
You, it wasn't, so, what you just said was not how you framed the nature of this conversation. So, if we're keeping the property, how would we, as a community, use the property that belongs to the town? And what I would suggest is EV charging station and public bathrooms, a facility, this is what this community runs on mostly, its tourist dollars, and people have nowhere to pee or poop. And the people who support public restrooms, which are not public, are private business owners. And I think if we're going to talk about keeping the building, the property, within the, within our tax base, which we don't make any money off of, then I think we need to look at what our reality-based economy is. to look at what our reality-based economy is, and how, to Mike McCusker's point, if we're going to have, if we're going to generate more people coming into this community to buy stuff or to live here, then we need to think about, in the 21st century, mid-century of where we are and what we're doing, looking forward as to what the infrastructure is becoming, and how are we aligning ourselves to get ourselves ready to deal with that. And the reality is, around healthcare and having more doctors come into this community, is that people have to pay to live here. It's very expensive to live here, and the medical profession is market-based, just like everything else, and there is very little money in primary care. So I'm going to stop so that other people can talk. Thank you.
You have a couple hand raised on the Zoom.
Okay.
We have people back here. They're the-
I can't read.
Can I go? Dan?
Yes.
Okay. So I didn't really get to hear what John was saying, John, but I think it had something to do with the conversation about affordable housing. Is that, is that building not suitable for some affordable housing? I, I like the idea of the health center, that sounds great. I just don't know if there'd be someone who wants to do that there. I guess, you know, that would be wonderful, too, but is, is the building suitable for, you know, making into some apartments for affordable housing?
I mean, I, I guess if you had enough money, you could, you know, that would probably be more of a question for, like, a building inspector or, you know, but I would say that it could probably be set up that way. I don't think you'd have a whole lot of space, but-
Would it be a good use of that, of that type of building? I mean, I haven't been inside the, the police station, even though I live next door to it practically, so I'm not sure, you know, if that even makes sense, or-
I guess that would be in the eye of the beholder.
Wouldn't it require a developer, developer would have to come in and make a proposal?
Right, yeah, exactly. Just what John, just what John said.
If I can just speak quickly, there, there are many precedents of municipalities, government, public entities holding buildings and leasing out concession space or leasing out the buildings and making money on that, and they get to control those in that space. So if it's a health clinic, that's good. If it's some sort of a concession stand selling burgers, if that's what the town wanted, you can do that. There's tons of precedents for this. I'm not sure why the select board thinks that we can't do something like that. Doesn't make any sense.
Well, not-
The, the health center is a great idea, and community space is a great idea, so I think the town should keep this property.
But if, if it was a center, we'd expect the people to buy it, and if Dr. Warner was placed to buy the building and set it up right here.
You just lease out the space for, say, you give them a contract for three years. Say for three years, you're, you're a health clinic. If somebody, if you sell the building to a doctor, and after three years, they don't like the space, they can sell it to anyone they want, and now you've lost control of what you're doing with that building. That doesn't seem to make long-term sense to me.
I understand, but the history of municipalities in the state of Massachusetts being landlords is not very good. It's not very good. It, taxes the town a lot and takes, takes a lot of, Jacob would have a lot of work to do, too, so, but we're open, we're, we're not closed-minded, we just, we gave an opinion at the beginning of how we felt, that's all.
Mike, hang on, hang on a minute. Mike?
Mike, hold on.
Hang on a minute.
Thank you.
Yep.
My name is Corinne Schaefer, and I live at 10 Ashfield Street. And while I really like the idea of it becoming services providing various healthcare, I have a very specific request about this, or thought about how to do this, that it would be, I'm assuming that the space would be adequate to set up a dental chair and, and equipment to be able to do the things that they do. And, I mean, I personally go to Dr. Collins, but I only need to have my teeth cleaned. There's no more room for any fillings in my mouth. And, but not having to go into Greenfield for everything. I get my healthcare through Valley Medical Center, and right now I always have to go into there. And if it was sold to, if we got, sold it to become just a medical facility for doctors to have their own practice, then in a certain period of time would be, I'd still be driving into Greenfield to just have my annual checkup, my wellness check because of my old age. And so I would really like to see it, I'm assuming that it would be enough space to do this, which is to have your checkup, a checkup, and if there's anything further that you need to do, you know, like, you know, having your lab work done before you have your appointment, but just to be able to have someplace that's very convenient and, and that it was, and it could be that, and that's obviously not a problem of it being off the tax rolls, because it was never on the tax rolls as a, as a police station. I would like to see it possible for clients to be seen there, and especially if you're really sick, to be able to go in and be seen and, and then, and not have to go into Greenfield for it all. My other concern is that we're a small town. We have, I always like to say, the towns of Shelburne and Buckland have under 4,000 people, 4,000 population, and we have three libraries, and now we have four bookstores. So we're a really literate, educated community. And so one thing that you could do is to sell the building, for example, to Valley Medical Center or a dental service, with the agreement that the building be divided between healthcare and, and dental services, and maybe even an office for other kind of social services that could be met there. And it could be sold to them with a consideration of $1. Thank you. So that's my very specific idea about the future.
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
I'm Mike McCusker, 32 Upper Street, and I would just like to comment that I think the RFP direction is the way to go. And if it gets sold, I am aware that sometimes buildings are sold to be used for a certain function, and it would be stunning to me to hear that the town sold the building to a group to conduct medical slash dental practice, whatever, however it's characterized, but that, should that stop at any given point, that it needs to, it gets reverted to the town for its own, make a decision about where it's going to bet on, and I'm aware of that kind of possibility, so.
Can we keep the right of first refusal? Do you sell the building, you retain the right of first refusal for that? If they want to sell, they have to-
We'll put it back.
Yep.
Me?
Yes.
Hi, Phoebe Walker, 30 William Street.
Good, but Lika from Police, thank you.
Good idea.
Thank you.
I'm usually here in a very unbiased role as the moderator, where I don't vote, but I want to say that I'm here as a member of the Board of Directors of the Franklin County Community Health Center. And so I'm not here as the moderator in any way, but, but I wanted to, I mean, I'm not authorized to be here to represent the whole board, you know, or the organization, but I want to say that the point of community health centers is that they come out of the civil rights movement, their, their requirement is to serve the underserved, they get funded in order to make that much more possible for them than for like a for-profit entity to come. And I think the place does amazing work. To Corinne's question earlier, they have dental practices as well, so long-term, I'm sure that would be an option if we were going to consider as a town to enter into an agreement with them to buy the building. To the, I wanted to answer one of the earlier questions from the screen, you don't tend to lease something to somebody who wants a ton of work done to it. I mean, I think if you did that, you'd, you'd end up having to do an enormous amount of work as the town of Buckland to turn that thing into a health office, right, to meet DPH regulations and all of that. So that's why I agree that it wouldn't make sense to lease it to them. But really, I just wanted to say that as a board member, I've been pushing them hard with Dr. Warner's assistance from the outside to get out here in western Franklin County and get access to us, because we are an aging community with limited transportation, and having a place you could walk to in the village would be amazing, to allow people to not have to drive into Greenfield. So I am firmly in favor of selling it and selling it to them. And I have just, I have disclosed my agenda.
Representative?
What's that? I'm on the, I'm, I'm, I'm a Buckland resident, and I'm on the board of the Community Health Center of Franklin County, where Alberto is from.
Community Health Center of Franklin County, okay.
Yeah, right, right.
Thanks.
They don't know that who's in where.
That the Community Health Center is in there right now.
Oh, okay, so Alberto Sagastumi, who's from the health center staff, is here online, I see. But anyway, you're not really negotiating about this particular thing, you're asking the people of Buckland, and so as just your random person of Buckland who's on this board, I would like to say that I'm firmly in favor of that. We need more healthcare closer to home, and we need to let this poor guy stop working.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
So I'm hardly a disinterested party in this. I'll repeat very briefly what I said at town meeting. I've been in practice for over 31 years in Upper Buckland. I have thoroughly enjoyed it, but I'll be 75 years old next year, and I'm seriously thinking about retirement. There's only one other physician in the area, Dr. Topolsky in Choban Falls. He is flooded with patients right now and can't take new patients, as I understand. We have one dentist, Jim Collins, who's in his mid-60s. I haven't talked to him about retirement, but I don't expect him to go too many more years-
He's thinking about it, I'm telling you.
So he thinks about it.
He made enough money off of me.
As I think everybody in the room knows, there's a national crisis in primary care, and the crisis is most acute in rural areas. In a way, we're lucky at this point to have two doctors here. We have had, at one time, five or six full-time practitioners, we're down to two, and, you know, with one impending retirement. Realistically, to get someone to come into this town independently to practice medicine is very unrealistic, you know, just, you know, I get offers all the time for positions in the city and suburbs, paying three times what I make here in Buckland, and anybody coming out of medical school and residency is looking at the same situation. So what do we need? We need a federally and state-financed healthcare center that's going to be here for an extended period of time. We have that entity in Greenfield, they're very interested in being here. Two to three years ago, I got involved with them informally to help them find a facility. I have been very disappointed at how difficult that process has been. Let's see, Brad Walker here. Brad gave me a tour of the Lamson facility, because we looked at a possibility of setting up a clinic there. We've had meetings at Mohawk High School. The health center, in fact, had an architect lay out a floor plan for 4,500 square feet of the first floor of the middle school, and there was a lot of enthusiasm for that project until it went to the school board, and I don't want to misrepresent the process, but I understand the school board wants at least another 18 months to survey property uses in the district as a whole before they can make a commitment. 18 months is a long time, and probably longer than I want to stay in practice, and who knows what the situation is going to be at, at that point. So I think we're fortunate to have an organization like the Franklin County Community Health Center interested in buying this building and spending enough money to convert it into a full-facility medical clinic with hopefully at some point some dental care, and the likelihood that they are going to leave this community after spending that much money on the building and doing all the renovations that are required to make that a medical center, I think, is very unlikely. I think we can look at long-term healthcare in the community, and right now, that is the only good opportunity that I see for having them here in, in a physical facility, and the town of Buckland can make that possible, so that's my pitch. Thank you.
Recording in progress.
Well, I mean, I-
I just have one thing to add. Speaking of the schools, the schools also have a crisis in psychological services for, for kids, and so I think if that were part of this community health center, that would also be a benefit to the schools.
They do have a behavioral health department that does short-term behavioral health? Not like, you know, you're, they're-
Now, I don't think we have, it just, not, not saying things like the cat in the bag, but we have people who, you know, someone mentioned what happens if we're stuck with the building, if this falls through. There are people, private businesses, possibly other ventures, I haven't heard yet, but I hear we discovered about it, but there are people very interested in this building, including the same people who owned it before, you know, in that particular way, so I'm not too worried and concerned about that, that we would not be able to sell it. I'm, I'm more concerned about what's the best thing for the town of Buckland, and I think, you know, that's, that was what we said before, and we didn't want to give you the pressure, we're just saying, let's get rid of this building, but that's part of it. It takes it off of our hands, and just heard Dr. Warner really explain it, it's going to take some work. Yet the building is, Joan went through it, it's built, it's big enough, it's got a cellar downstairs, it's got other rooms, and probably, probably right, as Dr. Warner said, you can get more than one service in there. You can get more than one, you know, one service, a doctor, dentist, possibly some health, mental health considerations, and I think it's big enough, but like I said, it's just, yep.
Maybe I'm a little bit correct, thanks. Also, there's something else you-
Phoebe, feel free correcting me if I've misrepresented the process here.
No, no, you haven't at all. Well, I just wanted to say that an interesting thing that we aren't talking about is that what, that a health center brings people into a community, right? It's not just that we from Buckland get to go to the doctor, but the people that work there, the people that visit there, they're coming into Buckland, into, into the village, you know, to spend money, and so I think that's, that's important to consider. And I totally agree with Dr. Warner that, that, that's the way it works. Once they invest, they're not going to, you know, leave the next year or something like that. They, they have a whole different funding structure than Valley Medical Group or other private health insurance, healthcare places. They did recently buy a place in Orange, so they know how to own land and all that. I mean, it's a highly skilled, great, motivated, super bunch of people, and I think it would be awesome if we were the West County hub for that. I just wanted to mention the people, business impact.
All right. Thank you, Phoebe.
Thank you.
Anybody else? I can only see one person online, so I don't know if anybody else has hands up or-
Nope.
All right. I think this was very good. We have a lot to look at. Do we, do you-
Do we, do you, as a community, feel as though that, you know, obviously, it seems like I've kind of been jotting notes down here, but it really looks like everybody is really in support of trying to move in a community health center. You know, and I have, I would have zero qualms with that myself. You know, I think it's, it would be very beneficial to not just this town, but, you know, all the surrounding towns. You know, so I think I would leave it maybe up to you folks here. I mean, do you feel as though we should have another?
Yes.
Speaking session prior to us maybe going towards town council to see? Or do you feel as though we should look at the strategy that we would be able to get from town council to be able to bring back to you at another public session?
We could do both.
I have some questions.
Janice, 1111 Monroe Avenue. I think it would be helpful at this point to hear what town council would have to say without it finding us, what it might help us think about. This is really how we can land, or if not, what else is possible.
Okay. Yes.
Same, our 44 Ashfield Road, maybe you or Heather already noticed, but if you could skip the whole RFP process, that would be fine with me, just go with the community. Help me not chase it.
Chapter 30B is very specific.
That's right.
That it has to be a public process. And we've had multiple entities, businesses, and other people that have been interested in it. So, we know that there's a significant amount of general interest. You know, and the other, besides a sealed bid or, you know, an RFP, RFQ, the board could also consider a public auction, which would be very entertaining.
It seems like they need to mull it over. I mean, I know for myself, I don't want to think about it and that I've heard from other people and it'd be helpful to have another meeting.
So, I'm in agreement with us having, I wasn't leaning towards us not having another meeting. What I think we'll do as a board, though, is that we will have this discussion with town council, figure out which, you know, what our steps would have to be. And then we can bring those back to the next meeting that we would have on this. Right? Am I missing something, Heather?
No. I have a question in the back.
Yes.
George Close, 71 Ashfield Street. I know at one point the senior center was thinking about doing that building, even anything that wants to do that, one form that the use at this point are not.
Well, you are the first person to actually bring up the use for the senior center.
No, they're at this point.
Right.
And I guess the other thing I thought about is, is the police department working with the children involved working out real well, or are they ever going to?
It's working out very well so far, yep.
That would be helpful.
Yep. Cheers to both of them.
I was curious, because I know I was thinking about that all day, if that was still funding it.
Well.
Janice, 1111 Monroe Avenue and Buckland Council on A.G. I'm also an appointed member or Buckland representative to the Board of Managers for the Senior Services District. Right now, I think the senior center had been informed or concluded that they couldn't really buy a building as in the entity that they were, but they could become a municipal district, which would allow them to pursue perhaps buying buildings. But right now, the Board of Managers is not fully staffed. We need at least one representative from the three towns. And right now, we have, I think, two from Shelburne, one from Buckland, and last I knew, maybe not from Ashfield. So, the district does not yet, in a position to start looking on community processes like that? So, that's sort of where that's at right now. If anybody else had anything to point to that.
So, in the past process, the senior center, the people who were looking at buildings rejected that building?
That I don't know. I wasn't involved, but it became a root point because.
No, I understand that. It was on the committee, but I'm saying.
Oh, well, you were.
We thought that building, we thought it would be perfect for the senior center. Actually, some of us did. And they really did not like that building because there was a mold issue in the basement, I think.
Oh, wow.
I think it's been remediated now, but, yeah.
Oh, wow.
And it also wasn't big enough for what they planned was. And that's all changed now, that's different. And that's why the RFP would be good to, that would give the senior center people the opportunity to maybe revisit it if they thought that is, yeah.
Yep, okay. I've also, I know, as I said, there's other people could be in this room right now too that haven't spoken or things that maybe have a real interest in it themselves. And I, I'm not sure what. The crowd was a little tilted, which isn't a big deal. I'd say it was tilted tonight towards the health center. If there's any things, I mean, I don't know, Heather, what they could do if someone, you know, I don't think I'd want to stand up in the middle of a crowd who's all talking about a health center and decide I want it to use for something else. But I would like to hear something from those people. Maybe they write us a letter or do something. But, you know, because they may have, you know, we may be, oh, yeah. I mean, you know, that's what I'm saying. I just felt like maybe we're just a little tilted, which is okay. But you already came prepared to help people, and I'm glad they did. Don't get me wrong. I'm not opposed to that at all because that helps us. That's also the community service with a lasting impact upon our town, which is nice too. But I still would love to hear from these other people. So, if you know any of them that were interested or you are yourself, I mean, maybe even send a letter to the town.
I'm not a, you know, I don't live in town here.
It's okay, you can speak.
I'm a business owner.
This is a town meeting, this is a town meeting. You can join in.
So, yep. Jay Hallman. I own the old fire station, 7 and 9 William. And I do have an interest in the property. The interest in the property would be to move the architecture and production end of our company, which is a construction management company, to the site. One, parking is difficult in this town. It has good parking, has the ability to take deliveries. And what we'd like to do is rebuild the building. Right now, it has some asbestos issues, has lead issues, it has, it has its issues. But it's a good, solid building. And it shouldn't be taken down. It's too nice a building to take down. Our intent would be to occupy half the building for our purposes and then use the other half to have space for, we'd like to have offices potentially on half of the second floor and use half of the lower level for any kind of use that someone might use. I know there's been some interest in putting a workout center there. But the fact is, it's a large building. It's in good shape. The bones are there, but the building does need a lot of work. And so we would like to, you know, we have an interest in purchasing the building for that.
Thank you, Jay, for coming forward. I was kind of thinking, because I thought I heard a rumor, and I just, it's, you know, I know it's going to be hard that way, but there's other.
Well, you don't want to be the guy in a really tall people, a community center, saying you're running a business out of it. I understand.
Well, I know you're a good guy. I just want to, I'm glad you got my message. There are other people that we should hear them out to somehow.
Thank you.
Whether it's a letter, go into the administrator so we can hear what they're saying too. So, well, thanks a lot.
Okay.
Can I just ask that fellow? I wasn't quite clear, what, did you say architecture or something?
Yep, we have, our business is a construction management and we offer design services. So, we have a design office and construction management office. And then currently, we have a shop up that would stay on 7 William. And so we would be offering construction management and design services out of that.
So, it would be, it wouldn't be like woodworking, like a lab machinery and stuff like that?
No, in fact, the woodworking that we do at our shop is very rare. Mostly, it's loading and unloading equipment and materials to move out to our job sites. Currently, we've got job sites mostly in the area, a couple in town here, one in Charlemont, some in Wilmington. We run about, they're a smaller firm, so we do about six or seven projects a year.
So, there might be a lot of like truck traffic coming in and out?
Well, we take, right now, we take about one to two deliveries a week. That's about it.
Okay.
They're a small firm. We're eight, eight people. And we just sort of run lean and mean, but we cover a lot of ground with a small amount of people.
And you'd have to pay taxes.
And I have to pay taxes.
I see.
About 30% more than I did a couple of years ago, yeah.
Okay, thanks. That answers my question.
All right. Janice, one more, and then we're going to move on from this.
So, I'm just carrying this following up on what you said. Is this building one where somebody like your business could have your part and you might lease the other space, which you think helps them?
We're looking at leasing about 50% of the building.
And is that only getting you to move them down? Does anybody?
It's about 20%.
No, not if you have one kind of screen or when they need the whole house, when they need the whole house.
Okay, thank you.
You asked about the process.
John?
Yeah. Question about the process that you're going to have. So, we did put the cart before the horse and give you authority to do what you see fit. And so, you know, necessarily that can do anything that we suggest because you have the authority to make a choice. But how will you arrive at this decision? I mean, do you take a majority of any given suggestion and think that that's, that's the thing that weighs the most? Or how will you make your choice? If you have an RFP, if you have seven different proposals, then how will you go about it? I'm just curious.
So, going back to, well, when they would work with council, they would be able to set up criteria. So, I think that they were talking about having a screening committee, and that screening committee would create and set the criteria. And then when the proposals came in, they would be scored against that criteria that was predetermined and available publicly to bidders and residents alike. So, it would be, again, a very public, very detailed process, if that was the route that they were to go. That criteria would have to be set ahead of any bid.
And these are the questions you put to council with this is?
Well, they.
Would be a desirable.
I know that I would want council to work with the board to establish that criteria at the, you know, taking the sum of what they're hearing from all of you that would generate that criteria.
Thank you.
People have said, not necessarily that they're concerned about tax dollars, but that should certainly be factored in.
Mm-hmm.
From paying taxes on those.
Yes. As I said, it's better we're thinking a little bit. It's wide open. We've got a lot to think about and any inputs you want to provide at any time, I'm sure. You know, it's, we'd love to hear it, so.
So, I would maybe suggest that we set up our next. Do you think we could maybe have answers for our first January meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, I think we should maybe look at having a second meeting for our first meeting in January on this topic. And hopefully, we should have some more information on that.
Okay.
Would be January 9th?
Yep, the 9th.
Right, Heather?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, so.
January?
January 9th. So, moving on. In response to the recent request from an organization, consider adopting a flag policy so we're better prepared to respond to such requests. The request that we received at this time is just under advisement. And I think we'll bring that back at our next meeting. But we do have a couple of different sample flag policies that other towns have adopted. I have not actually had a chance to look these over yet.
Actually, I like, I like the simple one.
Yeah.
The simple one sort of follows the state guidelines at one time. At one time, I don't know if it's changed.
Right.
That way, it's, I think it's very succinct and very clear.
Yeah. It follows the, yeah.
Yeah. I'm guessing that this is one out of Bellingham?
Yeah.
Yeah, and it kind of, it basically just gives a description of the official flags that can be flown out of town hall.
Mm-hmm.
I do like that.
I read both of them and.
Talking to both.
We get out of the way, it's coming this way.
It seems like the other one is more subjective.
Yeah. It's coming this way, it's hitting the town, follow it through.
Yep.
Right, no. But, I mean, the other one is more complicated and I.
Yeah, yes.
So. I would accept the motion.
Okay. I move to re-accept the premise of the shorter version of the flag policy. And they say the premise of the shorter version, we have to change to the town of Buckland, to the Bellingham, and certain things like that. Accept the premise of it. Short and sweet.
Okay. All right. Further discussion? Barring none? All favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So, Heather, it would be this one, obviously, just changing the town names on it.
One follows the state things more or less than anything, so, very good.
I mean, it doesn't stop anyone from holding a flag on the corner, you know, freedom of speech.
Correct. This is just, this would just be.
Our flag pole.
Flags that are owned by the town.
Right.
So, obviously, our flag pole here, the flag pole that would be out in front of the library, the Buckland.
Yeah.
Public library.
So, you want to push for that in Alhawat, too?
Right. Property tax bill insert approval. Did we get a finalized letter for that?
It's in your packet.
Oh, is that this one?
Yeah, that's it.
Yep.
So, it looks like we had, finally got departments to.
Yep.
Get stuff in there, huh?
I think it's a very good and diverse list.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. All right, and those will be going out, what, next week?
Yes.
Next week? All right.
So, select board just has to approve anything besides the, if anything goes in that envelope besides the bill, it needs select board approval.
Okay.
Well, I think this is very good. I've actually heard a lot of feedback from people from the one that we did last year. So, just kind of giving the town an update on. So just kind of giving the town an update on, you know, the different things that have happened from the town of Buckland standpoint over the last year. And just kind of gives a little bit of a breakdown of some of the different departments in town and how their, how your tax dollars were spent, so.
It's a good reminder.
Yes, yes. I'd accept the motion to approve the document itemizing some of the town's 23 success to be included in the upcoming mailing of the property tax bills for Buckland property owners.
You know, you second that.
No further discussion? Bearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed, none? If she needs to go to bed, you can.
He's staying with his new family.
Yeah, hard is not to go.
Well, you know, if the baby's having a hard time sleeping, you can bring her, bring her to our select board meetings, you know.
That's right.
And many other people, I probably do, Jacob.
All right. Documents to sign, we've got the FYI 2223 CDVG Food Pantry Services Contract Amendment. Why does it feel like this is on here at least in the time?
We are very good supporters of the food pantry services.
I feel like I say this every meeting, too.
I know.
Maybe just me. I'd make a motion to amend the fiscal year 2223 CDVG contract with Community Action Pioneer Valley to operate the West County Emergency Food Pantry as presented in Amendment One to revise budget transfers, cost between personnel fringe, and federally approved indirect rate, all which have changed since the town applied for CDVG funds in March of '23.
I'll second that motion.
Further discussion? Bearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
NBI Gap Network Grant Application Letter of Support. Comcast would be applying for the broadband infrastructure gap network grant through the Mass Broadband Institute. This program aims to address the digital needs of Massachusetts residents and businesses by funding the deployment of broadband infrastructure in areas that currently lack access to sufficient broadband internet service. The best part is that this initiative will be implemented at no cost to the town of Buckland or its residents.
That's cool.
Isn't that kind of what the other broadband was? Or are they taking that section over?
This, this is just addressing the five homes in Buckland that do not currently have access.
Gotcha.
Which street is that?
I believe it's up in Apple Valley.
Yeah.
Okay.
Paula's house. It's on the Terry Road.
So it's plays, it's homes that are too far off the public way, that it's cost prohibitive for Comcast or the property owner to run the line, to bring the cable up. So this would pay for the infrastructure cost of those five properties.
Cool.
Gotcha. I accept the motion to approve and sign a letter of support for a grant that will bring broadband to the last five residents in Buckland with no current access.
I'll second that.
Further discussion? Bearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none? Weston Sampson contract for Charlemont Road Mass Works Grant. So we signed the Mass Works contract with the state last meeting, so we're now ready to move forward with an agreement for design services. Was Weston Sampson the only that we got for?
We actually did not, the 30B allows a municipality to choose a design service. In this case, we've worked with Weston Sampson on Phase One, and they helped us with the grant application for Phase Two. So I'd like to stay with them. They know the road and that area, and I think that that suited.
Makes sense.
To move it forward.
Accept the motion to approve a contract for Weston Sampson for design services in the amount of $55,500.
You second?
Further discussion? Bearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none? Our, so our permits and licenses, our curb cut is out? We've crossed out the curb cut for North Street.
Right. We're not ready for select board to sign off yet.
Okay. 2025 liquor license renewals, we have seven of them, and it looked like all the paperwork was in order for those. They got them all in in the nick of time. I would make a motion.
You could do them two separate, yeah.
Do we have to do them all separately?
Yeah, we have to do the first one separately.
Okay. Make a motion to grant a farmer brewery pouring permit to expose, keep, for sale, and to sell malt beverages only to be drunk on the premises of Floodwater Brewing Company, LLC DBA Floodwater Brewing Company. Zachary Livingston, manager for calendar year 2024.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Bearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
With one abstention.
Opposed, none?
One abstention.
So two yeses and one abstain. I'd make a motion to grant a restaurant license to expose, keep, for sale, and to sell wine and malt beverages to be drunk on the premise to PJ SKI LLC, the Buckland Pizza I can't ever pronounce his name.
Paul.
Paul.
Just call him Paul.
The manager for calendar year 2024. Additionally, a motion is made to approve the 24 common vicuress license for Buckland Pizza House.
I'll second that.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none? I'd make a motion to grant a restaurant license to expose, keep, for sale, and to sell all alcoholic beverages to be drunk on the premise to Cafe Martin LLC DBA, the West End Pub. Paul St. Martin, the manager for calendar year 2024. Additionally, a motion is made to approve the 24 common vicuress license for the West End Pub.
You second that.
Further discussion? Bearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none? Make a motion to grant a restaurant license to expose, keep, for sale, and sell all alcoholic beverages to be drunk on the premise to the Blue Rock Restaurant and Bar LLC DBA, Blue Rock Restaurant and Bar. Christopher Ramirez, the manager for calendar year 2024. Additionally, a motion is made to approve the 24 common vicuress license for Blue Rock Restaurant and Bar LLC.
You second that.
Further discussion? Bearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none? Make a motion to grant retail package goods store license to expose, keep, for sale, and to sell wine and malt beverages not to be drunk on the premise to Franklin Community Cooperative Corporation, DBA McCusker's Market. John Williams, the manager for calendar year 2024. Additionally, a motion is made to approve the 24 common vicuress license for McCusker's Market.
I'll second that.
Further discussion? Bearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none? Make a motion to grant a retail package goods stores license to expose, keep, for sale, and to sell wine and malt beverages not to be drunk on the premise to Amzani Inc., DBA Sheldon Falls Neighbors. I'm in Merchant, manager for calendar year 2024. Additionally, a motion is made to approve the 24 common vicuress license for Sheldon Falls Neighbors.
You second that.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none?
Now, you're gonna make this motion?
Is that the last one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I'd make a motion to grant a club license to expose, keep, for sale, and to sell all alcoholic beverages to be drunk on the premises of the Sheldon Falls areas, number 2758 Fraternal Order of Eagles, Arthur H. Phillips, manager for calendar year 2024. Additionally, a motion is made to approve the 2024 common vicuress license for Sheldon Falls areas 2758 Fraternal Order of Eagles.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Abstain.
Abstain, okay. So it's two, two.
Is that your answer?
Yeah, I did one abstention.
Okay. You got two out of them? All right. Minutes and warrants. Make a motion to approve the minutes for October 24th, November 28th, and December 21st as written.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Bearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none? I'll also make a motion to approve the payroll and vendor warrant for December 5th for both.
Second that.
Further discussion, I know. Bearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none? Sewer commissioners, the annual letter approving sewer billing adjustments made for outside water meters. I only had one that I questioned.
What's that one?
It's an ongoing battle.
That's right.
Which one? Oh.
All right. All right, so I would make a, I'd make a motion to accept all of the sewer billing adjustments made for outside water meters.
I second it.
Okay. Any further discussion? Bearing none, all in favor?
Aye. I have to abstain on that because I'm on it, so.
All right. Adam's not reasonably anticipated by chair, 48 hours in advance. I have nothing. Select their number of concerns? Martha? Town administrator's short report.
I, I don't have anything specific for you this evening. If there's anything that you have questions about, or obviously if residents have questions, they can contact me directly. Happy to give updates.
Did I see an email, was it today or yesterday, on them getting ready to start North Street?
Uh, no. Maybe you saw an email that the water, that the water department's project is wrapping up? We'll keep the road buttoned up until spring, and then we'll begin construction then.
Okay. I may have misread it. It just, um, I thought I saw an email that said that they were looking at possibly starting the road construction on North Street, and Heather told me I was wrong.
Well, no, I, so, I didn't see, no, I didn't see an email. And it would be uncustomary for them to begin a project maybe this late in the season.
Well, that was kind of my.
That was your concern?
Yes.
Yes.
That was my thought behind it as well.
Yeah.
I don't remember when I saw it.
If you, if you come across it, please forward it so that I can verify, because we don't want them starting anything this.
Yeah.
Late in the season.
I will find it and get it to you.
Thank you.
I'm pretty sure you were on that email, though. So I will find it.
Okay.
Nothing else?
Public comments?
Public comment.
If, if there are, I'm open to answering any questions or concerns that the boards might have. I didn't, I didn't have an opportunity to prepare a referral.
That was the only question that I had, so.
Okay.
Public comment?
Because of my illness, I decided to stay home tonight and watch you on TV. And it was, this is what brought me down here. This is what brought me down here. It's that Comcast is still breaking into your select board meetings about, I don't know, maybe 20 minutes ago, and went into about Democracy Now! So I thought I'd lost your select board meeting entirely. And after I put all these clothes on, the select board meeting came back on. So they're cutting into you to try to show their Democracy Now! or NHG World or whatever those other programmings that they have committed to. And so how they do that is they break into your meeting to see if they can broadcast their other programming. So that's why I'm here.
Did you hear that, Dana?
Yeah, I, I shouldn't have let you know, so, we're not cutting into it.
I, I.
Go to Otis, okay, run to station, okay, he came in here that week, there was a technical problem at the station, there were leaving interfaces, it was more, there might be something there. All we thought was run here, we went up, and we both scratched your heads.
I'm glad you brought it up, because if this is still going on, I, we need to know.
Yeah, it's, because I know, this is still recorded, but even though the CCO, the iPhone, the iPhone, it is, go get it recorded, that, 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 I know, you're still.
So the whole meeting has been recorded, Lynn?
Right.
Okay, so I, I don't know how much of that, the meeting that you missed?
Up until maybe, I don't know, 20 minutes ago.
It seems like it went off right at 6:30.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Yeah, so probably it's their normal time to change over, and it may have just reverted back to the meeting, I don't know. But the whole thing will be recorded, so you'd be able to catch that other 20 minutes?
I don't wanna sit, I, I love listening to the Buckland's select board, but I'm not sure I wanna do it Sunday afternoon for an hour, again, get to this part where they cut me off. And so, but this has happened before, it's not unusual.
I'm glad you bring it up, glad to bring it up, Dana, this is good.
I think that's a good idea. And the other thing I wanted to mention, that's why I walked down front, because he can't complain about something I wouldn't do. And that is, I'd like to see all the participants, the public, come down here and speak in front of the microphone. Because if there's, particularly if it's a woman, then I don't wanna, then we get into the women don't have, the men don't have to come down here, but the women do because their voices don't carry as well. I think it should just be protocol, period, that everyone comes up and goes to the microphone because then it's picked up clearer on the TV.
Okay.
So that's why I came down here to get in front of the microphone.
Yeah.
You're not used to having the type of audience that we had tonight?
But they'll never remember it, like you said, which is true. We gotta say before, if you wanna speak, you gotta come down with a mic, yes?
And I agree with you, I'm not used to having these audiences, but when it is a, this, this room carries the sound.
Yes.
Who takes it, I agree.
Of course, because I'm not really conducive for speaking, and so when you're out in this room, it's a lot more difficult to, if you're not in front of the microphone.
Thank you.
Thank you. So this is all happening in real time. As soon as I was notified that we had dropped the signal, I did reach out, I went and talked to Dana, and I emailed Otis. Otis is acknowledging that it happened, apologizes, he's looking into it, and in the new year, they're gonna try to get a system that will be able to stream to YouTube at the same time, so there'll be a backup. We'll have to get you a YouTube channel.
Heather will help you get that set up for you.
Yeah, I'll get you set up on that, so there's a backup. But anyways, they're acknowledging that it happened and apologize.
And it does happen quite often, actually, so it's not unusual. But tonight, I was particularly interested in what people had to say, and then I couldn't.
Well, if it was only the last 20 minutes, you know, at least you didn't.
Missed much, huh?
I think, I think you got, yeah, you didn't miss much.
Missed the liquor license.
Yeah, we, we spent about 10 minutes going through the liquor licenses for next year.
When I go to group therapy at the VA, they say validate people, and so I'm validating myself. I did feel like I could have missed something, and that's why.
No, absolutely, no. It's definitely good to know.
And we always like to see you anyways.
That's right. We miss you when you don't come.
Yes, too cute.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Any other public comment? All right. Announcements in upcoming meetings. So we talked at our last meeting about whether or not we should be meeting at our other December meeting because it was a couple of days after Christmas.
26th, I think?
Yeah.
Day after Christmas.
The day after, yeah.
Yeah. So what does our docket look like at this point?
What I might suggest is that, depending upon council's availability between now and the 9th, that you'll have to have a meeting to have that discussion with council. So we could have a special meeting when we set up that conversation. And as soon as I hear back from council, when he's available.
So that's ultimately the only...
Well, that's the only thing I have pressing. That's the only thing that's really pressing right now is to...
Nothing that you see popping up?
Well, I'm sure there'll be something. But in the short, in the immediate, I don't have anything for you.
All right. So I guess we will be looking at setting up maybe a special select board meeting to meet with town council, if that's going to happen prior to, soon thereafter. So our next, our next official meeting, I guess, at this point, will be January 9th. And that will be at 5:30. And then also January 23rd. That's all I have. Any other announcements? Bearing none, I would accept the motion adjourned.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Thank you, and have a good evening.